Osmus?
Here.
Butterfield?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Mayor Reese?
Here.
All present?
Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? Otherwise, I would like a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Discussion. Hearing done. Roll call.
One second. I've got a slow computer here today. Councilmember Osk?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Shuldiz?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Well, good evening. Each year, according to the charter, the mayor is required to present a state of the city address. But before I begin, I would like to say that our prayers and thoughts go out to former city council member and mayor Les Heike and family. Mayor Heike served the citizens of Wilmer for 14 years. He is a longstanding member of the Economic Development Commission, a member of the League of Minnesota Cities, the National League of Cities Board, and the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. And Les has always been very passionate about serving the cities of our -- citizens of our community. We wish him a speedy recovery after an accident last week. As we look forward to the upcoming year, we need to reflect on the past. And tonight, I would like to take the opportunity to review some of our city highlights. We continue to see slow growth in single-family housing market. There were only nine houses built in 2023. Multifamily housing continues to grow, with the Preserve on 24th completing their first phase of development with three 36-unit buildings and starting the second phase of two additional 36-unit buildings to be completed by the end of 2024, including 180 units. Unique Opportunities completed the four-building, 288-unit Edgeview apartment complex located on County Road 5 in 2023. This successful project encouraged unique opportunities to start their second apartment complex along Lakeland Drive in 2023. The first phase is scheduled to be completed this year with 72 multifamily housing units. As with many communities, Wilmer is not alone with housing shortages. According to the 2022 Housing Market Analysis for Candy High County and City of Wilmer, the primary housing target market is senior housing. In 2020, seniors age 75 and over grew by 7% from the 2010 census. By 2030, the projected population of 75-plus in age seniors is to increase by over 40% from the 2010 census. In terms of units, Wilmer is short 615 units. This year, Bethesda will be constructing a senior apartment complex of 200 units in their first phase. But there will still be a need for affordable senior housing, allowing seniors to age in place. The city is in a position to help reduce the need for senior housing by selling 5.5 acres of parkland property south of Wilmer Avenue, known as Swanson Field. I am confident we can see this project through as we work together with our organizational partners. Last Monday night, council conducted a special council meeting to review and discuss the changes happening within the Centra Care system. Centra Care is removing assisted living care facilities from their portfolio of care systems and has been in conversation with the council and legal council to agree to the transfer of the building and land, which, under the previous lease agreement, the city had entered with CARES Health, a subsidiary of Centra Care, to Cura, who is now managing the Centra Care care facility. Our city continues to grow. In 2023, the city of Wilmer saw 979 building applications with a value of $52 million. Wilmer's rise as a regional center is a testament to the city's resilience and commitment to progress. Its strategic location and booming economy have drawn in new businesses, new residents, creating a vibrant and dynamic community with a diverse range of industries. Wilmer is a beacon for innovation and opportunity, providing a platform for growth and success. Through hard work and determination, Wilmer continues to be a thriving hub of commerce and culture, inspiring others to follow in its footsteps. One city department leading this effort is our Planning and Development Partner Department. Over the past few months, the Planning and Development Department experienced several new staff members with the Planning and Development Director Christopher Corbett -- good evening, Christopher -- and Planner Chris Frank. Starting last November, an administrative assistant, Robin Roche, was hired also in 2024. Currently, the city of Wilmer employs 120 full-time employees, including paid-on-call firefighters and an average of 100 seasonal employees. Each year, the city experiences turnover due to retirements. Longstanding employees leave an impact on an organization, and their dedication to their work progresses and transforms as positions are filled. City Clerk Judy Thompson retired earlier this year, and Vernay Larson was hired as Wilmer's city clerk. And permit technician Lynn Shuldiz replaced longtime Police Department Administrative Assistant Sue Edwards. The Wilmer Police Department continues to seek new police officers with six open officer positions. Unfortunately, filling these positions are a challenge, not only for Wilmer but across the state, with colleges sending -- seeing low enrollments in law enforcement programs. Wilmer Police Department has been resourceful and forward-thinking by attending college recruitment days, trying to entice graduates to come to work in one of the best communities in mid-Minnesota. Late last year, the Wilmer Fire Department created a first responder unit by recruiting current firefighters to join the unit. The first responder unit is made up of 17 firefighters dedicated to responding to car accidents, provide first aid and comfort until ambulance services arrive, and provide lift assistance for ambulance services. This service reduces the number of firefighters responding to non-fire calls. Last year, the new Community Growth Director position was created after receiving $450,000 of funding from Blue Cross Blue Shield. We are seeing the results of the Office of Community Growth, led by Pablo Obergron. Good evening, Pablo. This work is anchored in enhancing access, promoting equity and inclusion, and broadening the participation of all Wilmer residents from all backgrounds. We have experienced many events that have brought many of our neighbors together to celebrate the diversity of our community. And we are actively seeking and providing opportunities so our city continues to be a welcoming and inclusive community for all. Hiring new people in new positions is a major theme in the Public Works Department in the past year. All in all, we hired three new operators, one new mechanic, promoted Kyle Radens to superintendent, and promoted Justin DeLeo to Public Works Director after the retirement of Gary Manzer. Transition and turnover can be hard, but bringing in new hires can also bring fresh perspectives. The continued goal is to deliver excellent service to all our citizens, and the Public Works crew strives to do that. Over the past year, the crew from the wastewater treatment plant has spent considerable time and effort upgrading our wastewater infrastructure. Lift station reconstructions, pump building, rebuilding and replacement, sanitary line repair, and plant upgrades are just a few of the improvements that have been made. Tonight, the council will be reviewing the resolution to approve much-needed upgrades to Eagle Lake Lift Stations 7, 8, and 9. The entire staff continues to work hard to provide safe and effective water treatment for our community. Last year, I discussed the need to update multiple software platforms, and the first upgrade would be to the Finance Department. I'm happy to report that the Finance Department has completed the major functions needed for day-to-day processes. This change was a big undertaking and couldn't have been accomplished without every city department embracing the change. Changing software is a heavy lift, but changing financial software is an even heavier lift, and the Finance Department accomplished all of it while bringing on Tom Odin's Finance Director after the retirement of Steve Okins. The Park and Rec Department hired two new recreation coordinators, Anita Nelson and Devin Hatch, and promoted Ryan Scheffler to Recreation Facilities Coordinator. Staff continue working with Bolton and Mink on design layouts for a restroom facility and a pavilion to be built at the trailhead located near the Civic Center. Last year, the city was awarded $187,500 from the Minnesota DNR to help fund these two capital improvement projects. The city of Wilmer has undergone a major rebranding initiative to better reflect our unique identity and values. The new brand includes a refreshed logo and the tagline "Minnesota's Crossroads", capturing the city's essence and people. The heart over the W carries many meanings. Means, Wilmer is the heart of Candy High, being the county seat and the regional center. Wilmer's heart is the culture and the people of our community. And three, Wilmer loves growing new innovative businesses while embracing all businesses that make our community the best. The new branding emphasizes Wilmer's natural beauty, community spirit, and forward-thinking approach to growth and development. This is a positive step for the city, and I look forward to seeing how new branding will be implemented across various platforms and initiatives. One of the largest infrastructure projects we continue to work on is the proposed Open Access Fiber Network, otherwise known as Connect Wilmer Initiative. This initiative aims to bring fiber optic internet access to every resident and business in Wilmer, which would significantly improve the city's infrastructure and provide a major boost to the local economy. This will be city-owned infrastructure, available for private industries to operate on and provide service to the residents and the businesses in the city. This high-speed symmetrical internet access would enable businesses to thrive and attract new investment to the area. While residents would have access to the latest technology and online resources, the Connect Wilmer Initiative has the potential to be a game changer for the city. I look forward to further progress on this project. The survey is still available to residents and businesses on the City of Wilmer website. We expect in April to have available a business-targeted survey. Last year at this time, I urged the city council to decide on the location for the city hall communities and community center. It is crucial that the city council comes to decision on the location for a new city hall as soon as possible. Delaying the decision-making process will only prolong the uncertainty and anxiety felt by residents and stakeholders alike. The longer we wait, the more expensive and complicated the project becomes, and the more we risk losing the trust and confidence of our community. It is vital that we demonstrate our commitment to progress and show that we are capable of making decisions that benefit the greater good. By deciding on the location for the new city hall, we can move forward with the next steps of the project, ensuring that we meet the needs of our growing community and provide them with the best possible services and facilities. Making one decision at a time will naturally allow the council to focus on other needs, which are equally important, including the location of the community center and the future state of our city auditorium. The future of the city of Wilmer looks bright and promising for 2024. With its growing economy, diverse range of industries, and vibrant cultural scene, the city is a hub of innovation and opportunity. Thanks to strategic investments in infrastructure and development alongside a commitment to sustainability and community engagement, in 2024, we can expect to see continued growth and progress in business and housing. With its welcoming and inclusive community, Wilmer is poised to continue to be a leader in the region and a shining example of what a city can achieve when it comes together to build a better future. Thank you, and may God bless our city. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd just like to update everybody. So we are live streaming on YouTube, and we are recording this meeting, so then it'll be put on our website after that.
Okay. Next is consent items. Vernay?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, for your consideration this evening, we have the city council minutes of March 4, 2024, the city council minutes from the special session on March 11, '24, rice board meeting minutes of March 6, '24, planning commission minutes on March 6, 2024 draft, planning commission work session minutes of March 13, 2024 draft, the final plat for parcel number 95-570-0930, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission meeting minutes of March 11, 2024, approved plans and specs and advertised for bids for project number 2408, seal coating, wastewater lift station repairs, account and accounts payable reports for 228-24 through 314-24. Also for your information this evening, we have the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Financial Report for January 2024, the February 2024 Permit Report, and the Director's Report, and then to approve those.
All right. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the director reports, if they take the time to write the report, I would think they would want to give an oral report. That's why we used to do it. We have no committee meetings, so we have no interaction.
You'd like to add that to the agenda? We certainly can.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Shuldiz?
Aye.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
And Osk?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Next is the open forum. Individuals are limited to three minutes, but also I know we've got four people that have signed up to address the council. And they seem to be all under the same subject, and the -- And the open forum accommodates three people on the same subject, so I don't know who's going, but who isn't? Okay, Jay. Jay Lottan, Jay, give us your name and address.
I'm Jay Lottan. I live at 424th Avenue Southwest in Willmar. I'm here to address the proposed sale of the park property. I was a bit taken aback at that last meeting when I even saw that on the agenda, as my recollection was when this council denied the previous attempt to purchase this property. My understanding is Mr. Bachman indicated he would not be back. I'm a little distressed. I don't think it's a very good place for this project. There's water issues there, which will be addressed by someone else. I can guarantee you that if this gets built there, after a year or two, the residents are going to start complaining about the noise from the ball field, which is there already. But again, my biggest concern is it's a poor location. There's plenty of other locations in town, and if Mr. Bachman would like suggestions, I'd be happy to give them to him. But again, I just think it's a really bad place for this project, and particularly with the water issue down there and trying to put in an underground garage, as I understand they're talking about.
All right, thank you, Jay. Joe, three minutes. Give us your name and address, would you?
Joe Redler, 1912, 20th Avenue Southwest. I was part of the stormwater task force many years ago. Some of you were on the council at that time. And in that report, it doesn't speak highly for what you want to do with that location. Our city is divided in two. We have water that goes to the Hot Creek Stormwater, and then it goes down a ditch, 23A. Hot Creek is full, and they told us that years ago with the discharge of Willmar going down Hot Creek. So, you're going to take away an area that we wanted to develop into like a two-for-one so it would hold water, and yet, when the water ran out, it was used for a ball field. So now you're going to take that away. I hope you've all driven by that location, because it somewhat has a gully in there to hold water, okay? If you take that out, you look at the height of the existing buildings that they're going to take over, it's considerably higher. It's not the right location, believe me. We need to take the time, study the report. We spent $110,000 on that report years ago, and I don't know if you all are aware of that. And is that being looked at? Because if you look into it, in the meat of it, it does not warrant for this project. I'm sorry. I get we need housing. We have a housing problem. We that own houses are paying taxes. They that live in apartments are getting a free ride in our city. That needs to be addressed, too. The issue tonight is, the best sale is sometimes the sale you never made. This is not a good sale. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Next is a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending Chapter III Alcoholic Beverages. A call on Kyle Box, Director of Operations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. At the end of the last meeting in February, the City Council called for a public hearing to discuss amendments to Chapter III of the municipal code regarding alcoholic beverages. What we're bringing before you tonight is fairly straightforward. We are...
Kyle, just a second. I think I was supposed to open the hearing before you spoke, so I'm sorry for interrupting, but we'll open the hearing. Continue.
He can continue, and then you can open the hearing after Kyle finishes. That's okay.
All right. Sorry.
That's all right. So, two big changes that you're going to see in this ordinance. One is a past city practice that has been really precedent and within the city policy when we look for insurance requirements and alcoholic establishments. The city requires a million dollars coverage for that, and that's, again, been a practice for 25-plus years. And all of our current vendors and realtors licenses already include that in their coverage. So we're including that just to make sure that all providers, when they look at our ordinance, it's clear to them that the requirements are there. Secondly, the other additions that you see, other red lines or crossouts that you'll see in the license is to make the ordinance just more inclusive to all residents or any applicant that would want to apply for a license. That's really the core of what we're seeing tonight. There's not a lot of big changes, again, just including the million-dollar insurance requirement, which has been city practice for a number of years. Mr. Mayor, I'll pause there and stand for any questions.
All right. So, we'll open the hearing. Anybody who did want to speak to this? Doesn't look like it, so we'll close the hearing and call for a motion to approve the ordinance.
I move to approve the ordinance amending Chapter III Alcoholic Beverages to include the changes.
And we have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Ain't no discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Shuldiz?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
And Nelson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes. Motion passes.
Thank you. And call for a motion to approve the publication by summary?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Councilmember Shuldiz?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
And Davis?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Kyle. Next is the consideration of an ordinance to rezone parcel 95-923-8320 in the fourth ward. Christopher?
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, good evening. For your consideration this evening is to rezone parcel 959238320, located in the fourth ward. Tonight, I'm seeking two motions. One, that council adopt the ordinance to rezone the parcel from limited business to low-density multifamily residential, or three. And the second motion that I'm looking for is to publish the ordinance by summary. On March 4, I gave you the overview of UCAP Planning Commission, the role that they travel. They briefed commissioners on February 7 on their zoning map amendment application for the parcel located at 1209 Seventh Street Southeast, from limited business to low-density multifamily, to construct a four-unit building for temporary housing. On February 21, 2024, UCAP presented the zoning map amendment application and site proposal to the Planning Commission, and the public hearing was held at Planning Commission with no testimony. We did receive a letter of support, and the planning commissioners voted to approve the request. The Department of Planning and Development has worked with UCAP to modify the design of the building, as well as providing an entrance to the units off of Seventh Street Southeast instead of Willmar Avenue. If it is okay with you, I have Executive Director Debbie Brandt here of UCAP to tell you a little about the future site. Is that okay?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, my name is Deb Brandt, and I'm Executive Director at UCAP. Fabulous working with this planning team. I've shared with him before. I come from Raymond, where I can have a $20 permit and I can build just about anything I want. And I said, I know there's a few more steps in Willmar here, so I'm grateful for the guidance that he's given me and the grace that he has shown us. Christopher shared with you about what our plan was. We are going to be constructing a 12-unit apartment complex for temporary housing for families. And where we are to date is, the ink is finally dry on the contract with the state. It's taken them about four months, but now we can actually start moving ahead, begin with the process of purchasing the land, and then also starting to move ahead and working with Marcus Construction and North Star to construct our units. We are doing stick-built, but not the old traditional way where the contractors come to the site to work. We will be actually moving in some modular units that are stick-built to HUD standards in Redwood Falls, Minnesota, where all of the state licensures actually go and inspect the cubes before they leave the enclosed construction site and then drop them off at our building site. So it'll be slab-on-grade. They will be two stories. They will all be two bedrooms, and of the 12 units, we will have four handicap-accessible units. And one of the units out there will actually be an office for our staff, so we will have staff on premises. And part of that unit then will have washers and dryers. We'll also have space available for other partnering agencies to come in and provide services to the families that will be temporarily living there. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Now, Deb, this property is in the fourth ward. It's where Kendall Hope used to be, right?
It's on the corner. We have actually two lots that we'll be purchasing. The first lot is a corner lot right across the street from the community garden. It's been sitting vacant for many, many years, and then also across the street from Woodland Center. So it's that very corner lot, and the lot right behind it, as you move more towards the bus barns.
Okay.
So both of those lots we'll be purchasing.
On the east side of Seventh Street, I think that is.
Correct. Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
That was my question I was going to ask, too, on the east side of Seventh.
Yes.
Okay.
And we have met with some of our neighbors, and so they know of the project, and especially with the Willmar Bus Company and all the buses that will be going back and forth. We've had some good discussions with them about during the construction period so that we don't block Seventh Street when things are moving in and out and construction is happening, so that they've got buses that'll be coming and going all the time, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? In other words, I'm going to open the hearing, but anybody else?
I can wait until the hearing is closed. That's fine.
Okay. I'll open the hearing to the public if anybody wants to speak. Nobody? All right. Then I'll close the hearing. Call for a motion to approve the ordinance.
I can make that motion.
All right. We got a motion.
Second.
And we got a second. Audrey, you had something.
Yeah. I just wondered if you would share with us. I know that you got some grant money, and if you would share kind of the source of your grant money and kind of the purpose for the project and how it fits in with other things that you do.
Well, where do I start? United Community Action, our mission is all about helping people meet their basic needs and helping them in their efforts to move out of poverty. And with the plethora of programs that we have, one of them that's very large within our agency is our emergency housing programs. We have families, friends, and neighbors right here in our community that are experiencing homelessness. Many of our families that we work with are paying anywhere from 80% to 85% of their income for their housing. It's just not affordable, and they find themselves evicted or seeking other housing options. So the state had some one-time monies that were available. They had $100 million that they appropriated one time. This was a very highly competitive grant. There were over $365 million worth of requests, and they funded 98 projects. We received $4.4 million to complete our project. It was an extremely competitive process for us to go through. Our application was over 200 pages, but during that time, we worked with Marcus Construction and North Star to actually lay out what our design could be and look like, because that all had to be included with our application. And so basically, after we got the award, we were extremely excited that Willmar was one of the recipients. We see on an average of at least 10 homeless families through our doors every week. And so, we right now have an option to either move them to other counties, because almost every county that we're in, we have an option for shelter. But here in Candy, Ohio County, what we currently do is we lease seven hotel rooms year-round, and we're paying $12,000 per room year-round to have those available for families, and they are never vacant. They are always full. And so we know there's a great need in the Willmar area, and we also are going to be working now with some attorneys, because it's not going to be a lease situation where they lease from us. So we need to have agreements in place. There will be rules that go along from both parties, from our standpoint and from the family's standpoint, and we need to have the mechanisms if there's an unfortunate situation that rules are not followed, that we are able to then move a family on, because we've always got families on the waiting list that need housing. Then during the time that we work with families, which is about 30 days that they stay in our housing, past models have been we give families one or two nights in a motel, and that really does nothing. But through this model, we can now offer case management services where we work directly with the families, maybe on job-seeking, finding stable housing, get the kiddos signed up for school, connecting them with other resources within the community. And we have found an almost a 90% success stability rate when families are moved out of our project into their own housing. So we're very, very excited about adding this opportunity.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Justin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Will you continue to lease hotel rooms as well as adding to the services you're currently providing?
If funding allows. Right now, part of our sustainability plan, when we wrote into the state, was the funding that we're paying for leasing, is the funding that's going to be used for maybe ongoing costs. So we have to just see how those costs come out, how energy-efficient those units are, so.
Okay. And it sounds like there's still a great need, like this is a major step forward, but this is not solving the problem. Any ideas that you have about what's next in this process as Candy, Ohio County and the City of Willmar continue to try to address this problem?
Let me first say that we are not solo in this effort. We work very closely with Family Promise. We work very closely with Salvation Army to address the homelessness needs. We're constantly talking back and forth with our partners about how do we best serve families. I think the main thing is having affordable housing. And I don't know how that's going to look, because housing costs are going up and up and up all the time, and wages just aren't keeping up with that. Groceries are also going up. Families who are working, even if it's minimum-wage-paying jobs, just aren't able to cut it. Last year, we served over 25,000 individual, unduplicated persons who are having a tough time meeting their basic needs, and 87% of those are individuals that are working. So we are actually working with the working poor, and they're just not making enough to make ends meet, so.
Thank you.
Mike?
This may sound like a strange question. Over the years, I've helped a lot of people with finding money, believe it or not, for washers and dryers, coin-operated washers and dryers. I heard you say you have washers and dryers. Are they going to be free to the tenants? Are they going to be coin-operated?
Actually, they're going to be free to the tenants.
All right.
This is going to be built right into our operational costs.
The reason I say that, because I know it can cost a lot of money to people after a while, and they don't have it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anybody else? As mayor, there's Mayor's Per Breakfast every year, and I'm going to bring it up now because you're in front of me, and I want to talk to you about that. May 3 is the Mayor's Per Breakfast, and the Willmar Area Ministerial came to me and said, "Mr. Mayor, what do you want as the subject for this year?" I said homelessness. So we've got a program set up. We're working on speakers, and May 3 at 6:15 at the conference center, we will have a day, a morning of breakfast, and hearing about what we can do about homelessness in our community. So, I just thought this was the perfect time to say it.
Thank you for the opportunity. Very privileged to be invited. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Christopher, do you have something more?
No, I'm just waiting for a motion and a vote.
Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
And Sholdas.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes. Motion passes.
I call for a motion to approve the publication by summary.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdas.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes. Motion passes.
Next is the introduction of an ordinance authorizing the sale of a parcel in 95-872-1160 to Jennie O. Turkey Store and set a public hearing date. Christopher?
All right. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in front of you today is a offer letter from Jennie O. Turkey Store requesting to purchase the parcel located at nine, or the parcel number 95-872-1160, for the price of $28,500 per acre. The property or the acreage in front is just north of Jennie O. Turkey Store. Tonight, I'm seeking two motions. One, to introduce the ordinance authorizing the sale of the land, as well as to set a public hearing, a public hearing on the ordinance for April 1st of 2024. And to also authorize the publication of the ordinance authorizing the sale of land in the industrial park, third addition to Jennie O. Turkey Store. To hear more about the future use of it, if it's okay with you, I do have the Vice President of Supply Chain Operations, Mr. Matt Schrupp here today.
Did Matt want to say something? I saw you stand up, so I thought, well...
Yeah. Mr. Mayor and council, thank you for your time again tonight for discussing this. It's just, as we've expressed in the past, it's very important to Jennie O. to maintain our ability to continue to expand our operations in Wilmer. Wilmer is home of Jennie O. Jennie O. is important in, in this community, and by securing this land, we'll be able to maintain our future growth for that facility. We've got some items in the work, an item in the budget. We're in the final stages of approval of about a $25 million capital project for the receiving of turkeys into our process. It's going to take a little bit more space to do that. It also will help with security and safety of our employees in the future with the ability to have this property for Jennie O. So I'm here to answer any other questions that may come up.
All right. Thanks, Matt. I will call for a motion to introduce the ordinance and set a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second discussion. Being done, roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdas.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
And Osmus.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Now I'll call for a motion to publish by summary.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Being done, roll call.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdas.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
And Butterfield.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes. Motion passes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Matt and Jennie O. Next is the approval of a purchase agreement, introducing an ordinance and call for public hearing for the city land in the fourth addition of the industrial park for Dooley's Petroleum Expansion Project. Aaron?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm very happy to be here today regarding the Dooley's Petroleum Expansion Project. There is a purchase agreement between the city of Wilmer and Dooley's Petroleum. This would be pertaining to 5.52 acres of land in the Wilmer Industrial Park Fourth Edition. This would facilitate the construction of, of a truck fuel station, the expansion of their maintenance facility, and construction of a related parking lot. We had also set a public hearing on the ordinance to be held on April 1st at 6:30 PM. Since the spring of 2023, we have been working with Dooley's Petroleum regarding this land purchase in the Wilmer Industrial Park. There's a map that's attached, and I'll be referring to this map right here. And basically, in that map, you see three lots that are painted orange. Those are the lots, the three lots that Dooley's Petroleum currently owns. Parcel number five is where the headquarters is. Parcel number four is where the maintenance facility is. Parcel number seven is where they have various fuel tanks. The two lots they wish to purchase are shown in yellow. Lot number six, this is where the fuel station would be located. Parcel number three, this is where the parking lot would be. If they expand the, when they expand, the maintenance facility, which is on Lot Four to the south, they lose a parking lot there for trucks. And so therefore, they would be looking at that adjacent lot to the west between Backus Technology and Dooley's. Dooley's Petroleum is proposing to purchase Lot Six, and with the growth of logistics and warehousing in the industrial park, this includes Course FedEx, Northern Radiator, Magnum Trucking, Mills Parts Center, et cetera, Dooley's is petroleum, proposing a fleet fuel station. And they are now planning to double the size of their maintenance facility located on Lot Four. And therefore, they wish to purchase Lots Three of Block Four, so they can add to that parking lot area. The purchase agreement does allow for two box culverts and crossings over the stormwater drainage swale between Lots Three and Four to facilitate the movement of vehicles. I should also point out that the Wilmer Planning Commission approved this purchase agreement on March 6th of this year. The purchase price for the 2.93-acre parcel is $35,500 per acre or $104,015. The purchase price for the 2.59-acre parcel is $29,000 per acre or $75,110. Therefore, the total purchase price for these two parcels would be $179,125. In addition, Dooley's would be paying a park dedication fee, which is based on the land value, 7% or approximately $12,539. I will now start reviewing a bit the purchase agreement, which is also attached on page 120 of your packet. Now, just quickly, I mentioned a couple of things here. As I mentioned, the purchase price, I won't repeat that. There will be approximately $5,000 in earnest money that will be associated with this. On page two, Section 5A, option to repurchase. This would be valid for a period of two years from and after the closing date for an amount equivalent to the purchase price. This is similar to other purchase agreements that we've had with city property in the industrial park. That only vests upon buyers' failure to devote the property to its intended use or commencing construction within one year after the closing date. There will be phasing in of these projects. Obviously, you can't expand a building and then not have places to park. So in terms of sequence, they would be doing the parking lot first, then the addition and the fuel station. On page three, under restrictive covenants, so C2 or double I, the buyer shall not operate or permit to be operated on the property in commercial retail businesses or convenience stores serving the general public. Limited retail facilities serving commercial and truck traffic within and traversing the Wilmer Industrial Park shall not violate this restriction. In other words, it's not a seastore, it's a fuel station for semi-trucks and other trucks that are serving the area. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Robert Scott, the city attorney, to see if he has anything else he would like to highlight in the purchase agreement.
Mayor, members of the council, I think the purchase agreement is similar. We've had many of these come forward. There'll be others coming forward as well. And know that generally, it's true for all of them that the purchase agreement will give liberal rights to the buyer to conduct inspections of the property, to review the city's title to the property, basically do whatever due diligence the buyer thinks is necessary to be comfortable, that the property will suit their purposes and that the title is in a good condition for them. And then at closing, the city will provide a quitclaim deed and convey the property as-is. This agreement is just like that. That's pretty much how all the purchase agreements now are structured, that the city approves. Obviously, within that framework, each transaction has specific elements that are negotiated. Mr. Bachman has touched on the ones that I think are most pertinent, which would be the usement reserved to the city for the drainage swale on the site and the restrictive covenant on the convenience store.
With me tonight, council, is Tim Yokum. He works closely with Randy Dooley at the business, and he can also answer questions regarding the project. Tim, would you like to say a few things?
I'll make it very brief, but Mayor Reese, members of the city council, thank you very much for the opportunity to, to consider this. You know, this has all, I think, been part of the original vision that we've shared with the city of Wilmer. We're very proud. I mean, you spoke about the, the heart, and what does that mean? Likewise, Dooley's Petroleum is very proud to call Wilmer home. So when we put our headquarters here, the idea was always to be able to, to grow with, within this, within the industrial park. And this is this next phase that we're talking about, and how we can begin the construction and the expansion of not just the maintenance facility, but continue to build out, you know, have the opportunity to build out office spaces and make sure that this is a, a very effective and a proud hub for the industrial park. And the, and the commercial fueling station, again, should help attract other businesses, knowing we've got services in the area as well for that. So unless there's other questions, we're very excited to continue to, to see the growth and see this vision start to become realized.
We share the excitement.
All right.
Thank you. All right. I need a motion to approve the purchase agreement. Motion to approve.
Second.
We got a motion and a second discussion. Audrey?
Just clarifying on our sheet, is it 5.54 or 5.52? It's different on the three different motions.
Right. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it should be 5.52.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, are there, are there two different parcels that are being purchased? They already have three, correct? So they're just purchasing six.
They, they have three. They will purchase two additional, so they have a total of five.
Okay. So do we need a separate motion for each parcel?
No, the transaction is approving the sale of both parcels.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdas.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes. Motion passes.
Now we need a motion to introduce the ordinance and set public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second discussion. Is that April 1st? 6:35? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdas.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
And Osk.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Next is, we need a motion to publish by summary.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. All of the, of the roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Sholdas.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
And Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, Aaron. Thanks for your great work. Thank you. All right. Next is Project 2310A, bid award Eagle Lake Lift Station 7, 8, and 9. Jared?
Good evening, Mayor and council. This is the item related to the Eagle Lake Lift Station 7, 8, and 9. There's actually four actions associated with this particular item. The first one is to award the project. We received eight bids for the improvements, so the bidding climate is, is good. And we received good prices for the lift stations, which is, which is exciting. So the low bid was submitted by Tom's Backhoe Service in the amount of $1,909,332. And there is a resolution in your packets this evening for your consideration to award that project to Tom's Backhoe.
What was your estimate?
It was somewhere around two, I can't remember off the top of my head, I think around 2.08, something like that.
Okay, so it's a little under.
Yeah.
All right. We need a motion to accept the bid for 2310A.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Yes, Rick. Have we worked with this firm before?
Yes, we have. As a matter of fact, Tom's Backhoe is the same contractor that did the trunk highway 12 legislation elimination project, so.
Yep. All right. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Sholdas.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
And Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Next, we need a motion to approve the bid for, budget for Project 2310A.
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion.
Second.
And we got a second discussion. No discussion, roll call.
Councilmember Sholdas.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
And Davis.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Now, Jared, it says, we need a motion to reappropriate funds, but can you explain that?
Sure, absolutely. Mayor and council, this action item essentially reappropriates funds from the Iverson Park Lift Station project to the Eagle Lake Lift Station 7, 8, and 9 project. 7, 8, and 9 lift stations were identified in the 2023 CIP. Those funds were, were moved out to the 2023, and I'm going to get this wrong, and Tom's going to laugh at me, but they were moved into an account for this particular project. And as, after the bids came in and all the estimates, the city staff is recommending that $255,799 from the Iverson Park Lift Station CIP improvement be allocated to the Lift Station 7, 8, and 9 to cover the as-bid budget costs for that improvement.
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion.
Second. Second.
We got a second. Discussion? Carl?
Will that be shorting the Iverson Lift Station project then, or how?
Yeah, so finance, public works, staff, and myself had a meeting approximately a week ago and discussed that. The wastewater superintendent indicated that the Iverson Park Lift Station is still a priority. However, the project could be delayed for approximately a year or so to accommodate this request. As you may or may not know, Lift Station 78, or 1975 vintage, significant number of problems with them, and it's definitely a priority for the wastewater department.
So, this won't prevent the Iverson Lift Station from happening, we just need to move that down the road a little bit?
It'll be moved down the road, yes. Yep.
Any other questions? Justin?
Are there other areas that we could find that money so that every project could move forward?
We can work on that as staff, to identify those opportunities. Yep.
Thank you.
Audrey?
Just in, just how old is the Iverson Park Lift Station?
That's a great question that I don't have the answer to off the top of my head.
It's early 70s.
Similar vintage.
Yep.
So, just to follow up with Councilmember Osk's request, does that mean that we should wait on this resolution for you to see if you can find money?
I would recommend that, so, and maybe I didn't understand the question clearly, but I took that as investigate other opportunities to continue to move the Iverson Park Lift Station forward and not delay that.
That's correct. That was the intent of my question.
Yeah, so I'm just curious, if we approve this, you're taking the money from there and we're kind of saying we don't want to do that. So, what do we need to do tonight?
We'd be allocating it from the Iverson Park Lift Station and finding additional funds to supplement the reallocation to the Lift Station 7, 8, and 9, I believe.
Yeah, that's, that would be where I'm at. I would say like this is one of those things that I hope doesn't just disappear. I hope this comes back before us in the next couple of weeks. Sometimes I think we have some of these conversations and then they, they don't come back to us. So, it sounds very much like the priority is going to be Eagle Lake, so I'm content to approve this motion tonight, but please come back.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
And Sholdas.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes. Oh, I missed O'Brien, didn't I? Did I miss you? No? Thought I did, sorry. Eight ayes, zero noes, motion passes.
All right, thank you. Now, we need a motion authorizing the amendment number one with Bolton and Mink for Project 2310A.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdas.
Aye.
And Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes, motion passes.
All right, thank you. Now, it's Project 2404A Thompson Parking Lot in Ella Avenue Path Bid Award. Jared?
Good evening, mayor, council. We did receive five bids for the Thompson Park and Ella Avenue Path Improvements Project. The low bid was submitted by Joe Riley Construction in the amount of $138,036.10. There are two actions this evening. The first is the resolution awarding the contract, and then similar to the last item, adopting the ASBID budget. And I'd be happy to answer any questions the council might have.
I, when I look at this, I tried to figure out where Thompson Parking Lot is, but that's Homewood Park, right?
No. By Ro.
This way?
By Ro Park?
No. Across the lake.
Across the lake on Ella.
When you come off of the bridge on the north end, to the left, isn't that Homewood? Isn't that what that's called?
Thompson.
Huh?
Thompson.
You knew it as Thompson?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All right, we need a motion to accept bid 2404A.
So moved.
Second.
Here we got a motion and a second. Discussion? Audrey?
Thank you, Mayor Reese. You know what I'm going to ask already?
I do?
Yeah. Any chance or any work that's possible to make crossing not at the light?
So, we did review that, and given the traffic volumes, I am not extremely comfortable making a mid-block crossing, and I would not recommend it at this time unless we have some other pedestrian safety enhancements, perhaps, like RFB that we have in other locations around town. I guess what I would recommend at this point is that we construct the parking lot, the new trail, and monitor that location for how many people are really using it. The difficulty with mid-block crossings is it does put a, it puts pedestrians at a, at the risk of vehicles that aren't necessarily anticipating pedestrians in that location, so.
I appreciate that. I just, that's always been a very awkward, if you're riding bike, to go to that stoplight and to try to cross there is very difficult. And so, from a safety standpoint, I would feel safer crossing just looking, which is not a good thing with that. So, I would hope that we would keep that in mind and look for another option to help people get across over to Thompson Park.
Yep. Tom?
Same question. I meant it was going to ask.
Okay. All right, any? Rick?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. This was discussed many years ago, maybe 15, about putting an underground culvert type thing, like they have up on 71 County Road 40. I know it was expensive way back then, so I'm sure it's probably triple now. There wasn't any discussion about that, looking into it?
Culvert underneath Ella? No. Not at this point.
Did you ever find the plans from way back when?
Plans of the parking lot?
Underground culvert.
Underground culvert, there was a proposal that we discussed, probably 20 years ago.
That could be.
Hey, just can I ask, was that at that intersection where the stoplight is now?
Yep.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, we'll find them and dust them off.
Any other questions? Discussion? If not, roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdas.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
And Osmas.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes, motion passes.
Now, I need a motion to approve the bid budget.
So moved. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Discussion? During none, roll call.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdas.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
And Butterfield.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes, motion passes.
Thank you, council.
All right, liquor license renewals. Call on city clerk, Renee Larson.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, we're just asking for the renewal of the annual liquor licenses for the current, as listed on the, the, on the car. Those that are listed have been, are looking for renewals from April 25th, 2024 to April 25th, 2025, and that, of course, has been pending police department approval. But they, those particular establishments have, have their applications in and are looking for renewal of their licensure.
I need a motion for that.
So moved.
Second. We've got a motion and a second. Discussion? Big nun, roll call.
Sorry, thank you. Can someone describe the process of the police department's review of this and their approval and?
Councilmember Osk and members of the council, that process involves one of our detectives going through each liquor license applicant, verifying the, the status of the person applying for the li, the license to make sure that they don't have any felonies or that type of thing. They also verify the, the primary person that's the manager on site or they have to live within the Candy Island County here to administer that, so they do a background check on that. They check the, to make sure they're up to date on their utility bills, that they have all the necessary insurance requirements and that type of thing. At that point, they send a memo to me if they've met all those requirements, also calls for service if they've, if we've received a lot of calls for service for a particular problem that could maybe be addressed by, there could be a hindrance for keeping their license active. So, that's in process right now for the list that you see there. It's somewhat time consuming, but we've got one of our detectives working on it as much as he can right now, so.
Thank you. It's, it's a large list. Any sense of, is it 60% done, 80%, 10%?
It came in in two separate groups. I would say the first group, he probably has about 50% done. The second group was a smaller number, is maybe eight outstanding applications. So, I would say that everything should be done here probably within about two weeks.
Okay.
Tom?
And then, yeah, just one other question. Do we know if there's other establishments that currently have a license that have not filled out paperwork to renew them?
I don't believe there's any.
Okay. Thank you.
Tom?
Jim, on these, do any of them have multiple fails for selling to underage people in the past year?
Thank you for bringing that up. That is also one thing that we check to see if they've failed compliance checks. And just going by memory here now, there were a couple that failed compliance checks, but none that have been habitual offenders, so they've been within the ordinance of having X number of years from their, between compliance checks, so, or failures, I should say, for compliance checks.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdas.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
And Osk.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes, motion passes.
Thank you. Next is Green Mill Special Event Liquor License at the Civic Center. Renee?
Okay, so, this particular one, the Civic Center has been rented by Studio 38 to hold the Hairball Concert on March 30th, and they have contracted with the Green Mill to provide food and alcohol. And the Green Mill is asking for a special permit to provide alcohol just at that event. So, they will only have the permit just over that, those dates of the event.
Move to approve.
Second.
Here we got a motion and a second. Discussion? Carl?
This would be a question maybe from Chief Phelps, but how do they ensure age compliance? Will they have wristbands or how do they?
My understanding is they've had, the police department, one of our sergeants has been meeting with Studio 38 and the Civic Center staff about this, and I, I'm, I know they've got specified areas they're going to be selling alcohol. I'm not sure if there's going to be a wristband process in place or not, but that's something that I can check on. But they are going to have their own, are hiring private security to be there. We've got a number of our officers, I think a minimum of six, that are scheduled to, to be there that the Studio 38 is paying for. So, that's going to be part of the process of making sure that no underage people are served or consuming.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Sholdas.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
And Davis.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes, motion passes.
All right, community pride. Any announcements? Carl?
I'd just like to give a shout out to our law enforcement community. They've had a rough couple of weeks here with what's happened on the cities and here in town. Just proud of our law enforcement and what they do for us, keeping us safe, so.
Thank you, Carl. I will just mention again, the mayor's fair breakfast, May 3rd, 6:15 a.m., food starts. We were packed last year. Would love to see the council and staff be there, so make note of it. All right, need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. We got a motion and a second. We adjourn.